Are you ready? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Brea City Council meeting, Tuesday, June 17th, 2025. I'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please let the record reflect that a quorum is present. This time, I'll call on Steve Davis to lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Steve?
Will you pray with me? Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to serve in this capacity, Lord, and take it very seriously. Thank you for those that came out in attendance tonight. Lord, help us to address the agenda tonight in a way that would be pleasing to you. Watch over and guide us in everything that we do. Help us to draw more unto you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Steve. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
By John Payne, second by Steve Cottle. Any discussion on the motion to approve the agenda? Seeing none, I request a voice vote. All in favor of the motion to approve the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. The motion carries and the agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the June 3rd, 2025 meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Steve Cottle, is there a second? By Jerry Little. Is there any discussion, changes, corrections? Seeing none, I request a voice vote. All in favor of the motion to approve the minutes from June 3rd, 2025, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries and the minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is public comment, and we have no one signed up tonight. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we'll move forward to Resolution Number 10-2025, Cost Overrun Responsibility, Ferristown Community Development Block Grant. Mr. Gilbert?
I'll summarize Resolution Number 10-2025 by title. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Brea, Kentucky, providing that the cost overruns on the project funded by grant provisions for a grant from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development through the Kentucky Department for Local Government in the amount of $750,000 for the Ferristown Community Center shall be borne by the city and not by the Kentucky Department for Local Government.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Is there a motion to approve and adopt Resolution Number 10?
I got a question.
Okay, we got a motion by Steve, is there a second? By Katie, and we do have discussion. Jerry?
Yeah. On this Ferristown, there's $750,000. There's a $750,000 grant, and we're responsible for any cost overruns. Has anybody got any idea what the budget is for that? I mean, could it turn into something? How much more than $750,000 don't cost to build it? That's my question.
Yes, Jerry, you're correct, and I'll note on here that for any similar grant for a community development block grant, we're required to pass a resolution like this to accept it. And I do know that the construction estimate was a little over $750,000, but I'll recognize Sean. Sean, if you could answer that, please.
Yeah, it's obviously prior to bidding, the project is projected $150,934, city-funded.
How much again? So that's all the cost overrun is projected to be, $150,000?
Prebid, that's just projected, yeah.
Okay, alright.
Good question, Jerry. Any other?
No, I think you're right, thank you.
Okay, Steve?
I think too, that that amount's in the budget, am I correct?
It is budget.
Okay, so at least we've budgeted, or this budget we're looking at has the cost, the estimated cost overrun in it.
Steve? You good? And hopefully, we'll come in under budget, so let's knock on wood on that. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve and adopt Resolution Number 10-2025? Seeing none, I request a voice vote. All in favor of the motion to approve and adopt Resolution 10-2025, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. The motion carries and the resolution's approved. The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 11-2025, Anti-Displacement Agreement for the Ferristown Community Development Block Grant. Mr. Gilbert?
I'll summarize Resolution Number 11-2025 by title. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Brea, Kentucky, adopting the Guide Form Residential Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance Plan under Section 014D of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended, to comply with the grant provisions for a grant from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development in the amount of $750,000 for the Brea-Ferristown Community Center project to be administered by the Kentucky Department for Local Education.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. And before I request a motion, I'll also make a statement on this one, that this is another resolution that anyone that receives a community development block grant has to approve through the council. There are no structures or residences or potentially habitable residences on this site that would be affected, so just to make clear on that. So is there a motion to approve and adopt by John Payne? Is there a second? By Teresa Centers? Is there any discussion on the motion to approve and adopt Resolution 11-2025? Thank you, Jerry.
About the structures, they're nothing on it.
There's nothing, nothing on this particular parcel, and really in that whole 87 acre, there's nothing that's habitable. You're welcome. I meant to do that on the last one, Jerry, and forgot, so. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I request a voice vote. All in favor of the motion to approve and adopt Resolution Number 11-2025, please say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, please say no. The motion carries and the resolution is adopted. The next item on the agenda is Ordinance Number 8-2025, Fiscal Year 26 Budget, and this is second reading. Mr. Gilbert?
This being the second reading of Ordinance Number 08-2025, and having read the amounts for governmental funds and proprietary funds, at first reading, I'll summarize the ordinance by title. An ordinance of the City of Brea, Kentucky, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal period July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government and providing for a long-range capital improvement project and public facilities improvement program, budget, and plan.
That is the second reading. Mr. Cottle, I know that there was a recommendation. Would you like to make a motion on behalf of the committee?
Yeah, there is a motion coming from the Audit Finance Committee.
To adopt?
To adopt the 2025 budget.
And that does not require a second, so we'll move directly into discussion. Any discussion? Are you ready for the question? Alright, we'll begin the vote with a roll call vote, and begin with Mr. Little.
Nope.
Mr. Cottle?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Terrell?
Aye.
Ms. Centers?
Yes.
Ms. Startsman?
Aye.
Mr. Payne?
Aye.
And Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Record the vote as seven in favor, one opposed. Motion carries, and Ordinance Number 08-2025 is approved and adopted. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Ordinance Number 09-2025, Pay Scale Revision, and this is the second reading. Mr. Gilbert?
Being a second reading and having read the ordinance in its entirety at its first reading, I'll summarize Ordinance Number 09-2025 by title. An ordinance of the City of Brea, Kentucky, revising authorized positions assigned by pay grade and pay scale to include a 4% cost of living adjustment and to create and include a position titled Communications and Community Outreach Coordinator.
This is the second reading. Is there a motion to approve and adopt Ordinance Numbers 09-2025?
So moved.
By Mr. Cottle, second by John Payne. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve and adopt Resolution Number 09-2025? Teresa Centers, Teresa?
I just want to say that although I'm going to vote in the affirmative, I am concerned that we continue to raise, and I want the employees to make all they can make, but when we're raising above the local averages, it's concerning to me, and I just, the city is in a good financial position, we can afford it. As I said, I'll vote in the affirmative, but I do have concerns about raising pays and when they're above the local averages to the hospital and the schools and factories and those things.
Thank you, Teresa. Other discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I will say.
Jerry, you have four.
I'm gonna vote no, and the reason I'm voting no, the cost of living raise, okay? That's my problem. A cost of living raise, or a COLA, should be the same amount of money for everybody. If you want to give people a merit raise or performance raise, I've got no problem with that. You need to make all, people needs to be paid all they can, but in my, this me a feeling, I just feel like that a cost of living, the bread, the milk, the gas, costs the same for everybody, and it should be a straight amount of money across the board, and then if you want to give them merit or performance, that's fine. That's just all I've gotta say. I just don't think it's hardly fair to, that's just me, that's all I wanna say.
Thank you, Jerry. Any further discussion on the motion? Cora Jane?
I just wanna say I really agree with Jerry on that. I know most people think that it keeps the thing going where you're at, but 4% of some pays and 4% of another, it just widens the gap, and I think that's something we need to be mindful of when we do these, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Cora Jane. You certainly may. Let me see if anybody else has discussion, Jerry, and I'll come back. Katie?
I thought during the work session, we expressly, someone expressly said that this was not a COLA raise, or we talked about it not being a cost of living adjustment, but in the ordinance, it sounds like that's how it's described, so can someone explain that?
Sean and I discussed that, and it should say pay adjustment. Sean, do you want to address any more about that? That's really what the intent is, is to make sure that we're on par, not necessarily with local industry, but with other city governments and county governments in our area. Sean, do you want to address that anymore?
Can I, may I?
Steve, you may, certainly, go right ahead.
So Sean talked about this a little bit in our work session. We have used COLA as the overarching term, whether we give a dollar amount, whether we give, because we've done that. We've given a dollar per hour, we've done different things over the years. This is not technically a COLA. There is, in fact, a COLA built into our new pay scale system, so that as people move through the pay scale, they're getting slight increases that is a dollar amount. I think this is really recognition of trying to keep our pay scale in line with where we're trying to go with it. We talked about this in our, and I think it's important to talk about in the big meeting versus a work session, because one of the things that we did talk about was the issue with, if we do dollar amounts, it sort of starts, it creates what's called compression from a pay scale perspective. If you have someone who is earning a lower dollar amount, it automatically starts to bump everyone up against all of the pay grades above that, because it is a much higher, a much higher percentage. I'll give you an example. If you look at our lowest full-time paid employee, a dollar per hour, I'm trying to remember if I did this math, it would be roughly a 6% increase to that position, whereas sort of a middle-of-the-road, the number that I used was our lowest amount for a lieutenant in the fire department. That would be less than, be like a 3.5% increase for those, and so this is not a COLA. We've used that term, if we give a penny, we call it a COLA, and we probably, to Jerry's point, and to all of our, this is a good learning opportunity, unless we're gonna use the current inflation rates and sort of what our CPI data tells us, we probably don't need to call it a COLA. We probably just need to call it what it is, and we're trying to give across-the-board raises to all of our employees the best we can, and so in this example, I don't think it's actually a cost of living adjustment, it's just what's listed, and Sean brought that up in the work session.
Any other discussion?
Anybody else?
I'm coming back to Jerry. Jerry? Yes, sir.
A COLA raise, a COLA raise is in no way supposed to raise your pay guide. A COLA raise is for the cost of living. Now, we've had, I voted on, I believe in paying people, all you can pay them for the job they're doing, and in '24 and '25, we got our pay scale adjusted, and they've been two raises in '24 and '25 budget, and the pay scale got, some people may have got a $5,000 or $6,000 raise, and then in the new pay scale, everybody, all managers gets $1,000 a year, and then all employees gets $500 a year, and that's to keep your pay guide up, and then you're supposed to have merit raises or performance raises. I believe in merit and performance raises, okay? And that's what I'm saying, it's not that I, we've been really generous in the last two years with pay for our employees, and they deserve it. I'm not saying that. I don't want nobody to think that, I don't want to pay people, but I just don't agree with the COLA part, that's all I've got. Don't call it anything, because we had a work session, I thought we just called it a 4% increase, and I said I'm 100% good with that. If you won't call it a 4% increase, just don't call it COLA, and that's just me, I'm probably wrong.
Thank you, Jerry. Any additional discussion? Additional discussion? Are you ready for the question?
For the record, I think he's right. We don't need, we need to change our terminology as we move forward, so we can put that in the perspective as we go forward.
Thank you, Steve. Any further discussion? Alright, seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote. This time, I'll begin with Steve Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Aye.
Ms. Startsman?
Aye.
Ms. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
No.
Mr. Cottle?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Terrell?
Aye.
Record the vote is seven in favor and one opposed. The motion carries and the ordinance Number 09, I'm sorry, yeah, 09-2025 is approved and adopted. The next item on the agenda is Ordinance Number 10-2025, Electric Rate Adjustment, and this is the second reading. Mr. Gilbert?
Whereas Ordinance Number 0908 established the Brea Municipal Utilities Electric and Connection Rate Schedule, and whereas the electric and connection rate schedule was modified in the 2012-2013 fiscal budget to cover basic operations of the Brea Municipal Utilities, and whereas there's not been an electric rate and connection increase since the enactment of the 2012-2013 fiscal year budget, and whereas the current electric and connection rate structure does not support the current general expenses of the Brea Municipal Utilities, and whereas if the current electric and connection rate schedule is left unchanged, the Brea Municipal Utilities will face a deficit, and whereas the City Council of the City of Brea, Kentucky, has determined that the rate and tariffs charged for the municipal electric utility must be revised in order to continue the efficient and proper management of the electric utility system and to conserve the natural resources used for electricity generation. Now therefore, be ordained by the City Council of the City Commonwealth of Kentucky, one, that the Brea Municipal Utilities Electric Rate Schedule effective July 8, 2025, shall be amended as set forth on the attached Exhibit A. Two, that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are repealed, this ordinance shall be published according to law.
This is the second reading. Is there a motion to approve and adopt?
I make a motion to approve.
By Jerry Little, second by Cora Jane Wilson. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve and adopt Ordinance 10-2025? Any discussion? Are you ready for the question?
I want to say, let me say one thing.
Yeah, Jerry, and then I'll come to you, Teresa.
We haven't had an electric increase in a lot of years, okay? That's all I'm saying. We've held the rate right down as low as we can, and it's just come time to make adjustments.
Thank you, Jerry. Teresa?
I also want to say that Kevin and the consultants that they worked with, I thought, did a phenomenal job of structuring this as it moves forward, and to be quite frank, with the rates going up amongst cooperatives and privately-held utilities, I think that we're gonna, the customer, the average residential customer is gonna see very, very little difference in their bill, and we're grateful for that, and I'd just like to thank Kevin for that.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Katie?
Very similar to what Teresa said. I know usually you say we had a work session to discuss this already, but we've talked about this extensively, and Kevin and the folks he brought in to also study this issue did such a good job explaining it to the council and really making a case for us to do this now so that we can be sustainable, both as a utility company, but then also for our community, so, yeah.
Thank you, Katie. Any further discussion on the motion by Cora Jane Wilson?
I just kinda wanna echo the same thing, and for people to stop and realize, there's not been a pay rate increase, I believe, since 2013, and that says they're doing a phenomenal job, in my book, that, you know, that they've kept the rates down for people, and it's an increase, but it's not so much that it's gonna paralyze anybody. I mean, if you think that it's high, I'll come and look at my bill and with bluegrass, and we'll see.
Thank you, Cora Jane. Jerry?
I want to say one more thing. You know, it's not much of an increase, but if you're drawing a check and you're drawing about $1,000 a month, and you're trying to pay your bills, $7 or $8 means a lot, but we didn't have no choice but to raise it, but I don't want nobody to think that $7 or $8 to some people means a lot more than it does to other people. If you was raised real poor, you'd understand how it was back in, I'll just tell you.
Thank you, Jerry. Further discussion, comments? Are you ready for the question? Alright, we'll move to a roll call vote. This time, I'll begin with Mr. Little.
Aye.
Mr. Cottle?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Terrell?
Aye.
Ms. Centers?
Yes.
Ms. Startsman?
Aye.
Mr. Payne?
Aye.
And Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries and ordinance Number 10-2025 is approved and adopted. The next item on the agenda is Department Head Reports, and our featured department head is our newest department head. Welcome back to Nancy Conley, Director of our Tourism Department. Nancy, you have the floor, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Administrator, and Brea City Council. I'm happy to be here this evening. Thank you for the opportunity to serve Brea once again. I'll start with my report, just kind of a quick update on the Brea Craft Festival. As a reminder, it is July 11th, 12th, and 13th. Friday and Saturday is from 10:00 to 5:00, and Sunday is from 10:00 to 4:00. We will do some ground marking and booth setup spaces on Wednesday of that week, and then Thursday is vendor move-in, and everything kind of comes in and fills in on that Thursday, all the setup, tents, signage, all of the above. We have 104 vendor booths confirmed as of right now. We did have a few cancellations, so there was 108. There is a waitlist, and the waitlist has been contacted to fill some of those remaining spaces. Currently, there are seven food and drink vendors confirmed. All of the entertainment is confirmed for that event as well, and to date, we have collected just over $31,000 in those vendor spaces. There are more payments that should be coming in leading up to the event. I left everybody a handout today. It is the 2024 Economic Impact of Tourism in Kentucky numbers, and it's my pleasure to share with you, just last week, the Tourism Economics Report was released, and this is really over-the-top exciting news for the tourism industry. To really understand the importance of our tourism work in Brea, I wanted to give you this big picture and then break it down for you. So your flyer is front and back. One side has the Kentucky numbers on the top right in Madison County, the reverse side gives you the Bluegrass region in which we reside. For the sake of terminology, I want to let you know that when we refer to a traveler or a visitor, when I go over these statistics, that means it's somebody that traveled more than 50 miles to the destination, so that's either Kentucky as a whole, or to, when we look at Madison County, that's somebody that's traveled 50 miles to Madison County, or to the Bluegrass region, or someone that stayed overnight in either Kentucky, the region, or the county. There's a lot of different resources for this data that has been collected. Some of it kind of ties into what Donna had spoke about last time, where they do Visa Destination Insights, so every time you swipe your Visa credit card, if you're traveling, they know you're from Kentucky, or they know, so all of that is kind of being tracked. The Kentucky Department of Revenue Lodging and Sales Tax Receipts, U.S. Census, there's a lot of resources that go into this research and data that is completed on behalf of the State Tourism Department each year. So on to the report. This Tourism Economics Report shows that 80 million travelers visited Kentucky in 2024. Those travelers spent a total of $10.1 billion across the state. This is a 3.8% increase from 2023 numbers. In fact, this year is the third year in a row of record-breaking economic impact for the state of Kentucky. If we look at that spending, 26% of the traveler's budget was spent on food and beverage, 23% on lodging, 19% on transportation, 18% on retail, and 13% on recreation and entertainment. Of this spending, $1 billion was contributed to state and local taxes. What that means for us in the state of Kentucky is that if we did not have those travelers coming to Kentucky, each household would have to have spent, or have been taxed, an additional $575 to make up that revenue source. It's quite impactful. So I hope you all will agree with me when I say that tourism is big business for Kentucky and is big business for Brea. After reviewing this study, there is no doubt in my mind that having a diversified economy and marketing approach is ideal for Brea. I intend for us to continue to strengthen and diversify our marketing approach, being very strategic about marketing and gain from all sectors of tourism. From fostering preservation of natural and cultural and historic resources, to outdoor adventure tourism, to unique shopping and dining, memorable art and craft experiences throughout our community, special events and everything in between, Brea really does have much to offer. The tourism industry is driving force for Kentucky's economy, and this 2024 Economic Impact Report reinforces this. Excuse me. Visitors are continuing to invest throughout our state, our community, and throughout our region. Last year, Brea Tourism Office welcomed and served 16,707 visitors. That is just a fraction of what we know has came into our community and our county. When we look at the Bluegrass region side of the report, there was $2.67 billion as the economic impact, and Madison County's economic impact number was $243.7 million. Once again, I'd just like to reinforce that tourism is big business, not just in Kentucky, but also in Brea. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Good report, good statistics. Questions or comments for Nancy? Teresa?
Nancy, I want you to pass along to your board how much we appreciate the community investment that's in this year's budget.
Thank you.
Other comments for Nancy? Nancy, good job, and also compliments to your staff, full-time and part-time staff. They do a great job, and I think having that welcome center open as much as we do is benefit to all businesses in Brea and beneficial to our community, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, welcome back, and looking forward to working with you going down the road.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy. Would any other department heads like to address the council? I see Amanda Haney, our Codes and Planning Administrator, with her hand up, and she's gonna use a different microphone tonight. Amanda, the floor is yours.
Thank you. It is unusual to be on this side of the room. Good evening. Just wanted to let you know about the Comprehensive Plan Project, Brea Beyond 2025. So we will have a public survey coming out very soon. Please look for that, likely the first part of next week. So this'll kind of be our next mission, and just our consultants being able to gather I will mention that, and it'll be a Survey Monkey link. So, again, be looking for that early next week. Some of those questions that we are interested in as part of this survey, of course, it is open to people who own property here, own businesses here, who get an education here, who work here, who just like to visit here. So, again, we really want to hear from all different dynamics. And some of those questions are the issues, top three issues that the Comprehensive Plan should focus on. So, where do we want our attention as part of this plan? Challenges that Brea is facing? Types of businesses that you'd like to see more of in Brea? Transportation improvement questions? What would you like to see change? And what you hope doesn't change? So, a lot of different perspectives. There are more questions than that. It's about 20 total. So, it would likely take you about 20, 25 minutes to really do a thorough assessment. But again, any input is appreciated. Our consultants, again, working diligently to gather that information, and we will let you know soon when other opportunities for public in-person sessions will be. And that's what I have.
All right. Amanda, when the survey is ready to go out, is that something that you can send the hyperlink to the council members where they can share that with their constituents as well?
And we ask that you please do. So, we will share that with as many folks as we have contacts with. It'll be shared through our Comprehensive Plan website, on Facebook. So, we absolutely want to get that out to as many folks as possible, if you will help us in that endeavor.
And I would ask the council members to respond to the survey as well, because
Yes, please.
your opinion also matters. Any questions or comments for Amanda while she's at the podium? All right, Amanda, thank you for the update. Appreciate your work and the work of your team, and the steering committee, too. Not, don't want to overlook them, because they're doing a good job as well. Thank you. Any other department heads would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll move forward to the City Administrator's report, and I'll recognize City Administrator Sean Sandlin.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. On behalf of all the employees, thank you for passing the budget tonight. We greatly appreciate that. There's a lot of hard work that goes into that budget, and I have taken a few notes along the way, this being my first budget, and how we can make things a little smoother next time, and we'll work on that. So, thank you. Just to let you know also that the reverse salt auction held by Kentucky League of Cities has been completed. We have accepted the bid for Morton's Salt for the price of $112,000 per ton delivered to the city of Brea. The last documented that I could find in 2023 was $119 per ton, so it has went down a little bit. I couldn't find 24s. I'm not sure if it was a two-year contract at that point or not, but just to give you some back history. Our fire chief and our police chief have been working with the Ignite South on a career pathway for the firefighters and police officers. So, that's something that they've been working on, that we're really proud of, and we had that in Brea community, so we're trying to move that into the county school system at this point. So, proud of that. Also, if provided that it doesn't rain, or the rain has not changed the schedule, the Bluegrass Recreation has started, or going to be starting, the shade structure install in the park system on June the 23rd. So, I just wanted to get that information out there to all of you. That's all I have for my report, Mayor. If anyone has any questions?
I'm making myself a note, because I know somebody that needs to know about your, the students, the curriculum.
Gotcha.
Somebody that's interested in that, reminded me. Questions for Sean? Katie?
Do you have any updates about the pool? It's still been raining so much.
Yeah, we're honestly about halfway. I mean, things will start moving faster at this point, because, you know, all the piping and that kind of thing is done. So, they're forming for concrete right now, and once that starts going, things will be speeding up. But rain has caused us tremendous delays. Sure has.
Okay. Other questions or comments for Sean? All right, Sean, you got off easy tonight. Thank you. Good report, Sean. Next up is Mayor's comments, and while we got Sean on our mind here, Sean, nice job. You did a really good job with your first budget. I know you don't do it by yourself, it's your department heads, but, and Susan, Finance Director in particular, kind of guiding that process, but you did a really good job in your first year, and I want to compliment you publicly for the hard work and dedication to making that work and bringing us a good budget. So, thank you also again, thanks to Susan, the department heads, and the council, all of you, for everybody that was involved with the budget process. The budget states our priorities as a city and should be reflective of what the people want, and I think that this budget does that very well. So, thanks to everyone involved there. The next item that I want to mention just briefly is my understanding, Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, but construction began last week at Fire Station 2 for the Safe Haven Baby Box. So, we've got that underway, and Charlie Russell, our fire chief, and his team are kind of monitoring that, making sure that Sean's kept informed. So, hopefully, we'll have that in place with all the alarms and everything, where it would be able to be used in the near future. So, I think that's good news in a project and process that's worked exceptionally well. So, thanks to Sean, Charlie, and everybody involved with that. Next item, as I see Priscilla out here, and I don't want to forget Parks and Recreation, we got the Fourth of July Spectacular. It's Friday, Fourth of July, 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., Priscilla Wright. She's got all kinds of fun things to do. There's gonna be a live band, face painting prizes, photo booth, games, inflatables, Kids' Corner, and several food trucks and sponsors, including the American Legion, Boy Scouts, Brea Youth League, and others. Those are the non-commercial ones I see, so I'll mention them again, American Legion, Brea Youth League, and the Boy Scouts. So, please come out to the Fourth of July celebration. I know you'll enjoy it, and Priscilla has a good fireworks show in line for us. You want to say anything more about that, Priscilla? You good? All right. Thank you, sister. And the last item that I had is, I was really happy to find out that Smithsonian named Brea one of the 15 best small towns to visit in 2025. I think that speaks very well for our entire city, especially our Tourism Department, the Tourism Commission, and the effort that's been put into making Brea an attractive and fun place to come visit, with fun things to see and do, and a variety of things, as Nancy mentioned. You know, we have everything from outdoor adventure to food as art, you know, good, unique dining experiences, historic hotels, and of course, the arts and crafts industry as well. But we've diversified more, and we're gonna keep doing that. So, Smithsonian's 15 best small towns to visit in 2025, and Brea is one of them, from all across the country. That concludes my report, and we'll move next into council comments, and I'll begin with Mr. Little.
No comments.
Thank you, Jerry. Mr. Cottle?
Couple of things. One, I just want to thank Sean and Susan and all of the department heads for putting together a very thoughtful, complete budget. That's one of the biggest things that we do on a given year. The, you know, it is essentially a policy document on what we were putting our values as a city government, and I really think that what we put together reflects what our values have been and will continue to be. And also, I would say to anybody who has any interest, get online and look through that document. Susan has worked, really for years, to get to the point that we are with our budget document, and it's really impressive. It's award-winning, and it shows the work that our Finance Department does on a given year. On a different note, the information with, for tourism is fantastic. This is, I love when we put together things like this, to consider the fact that if you look at our state economy, there's some local taxes that are included in that, but roughly 6% of our state revenue is coming from tourism. I think they bring in roughly $15 billion, and $1 billion is 6.6%. So, all that to be said, that really shows that in our state, tourism is a huge part of the industry, and in Brea, we continue to kind of drive that ship forward. And so, kudos to all this information. This is a really great graphic. I think you should share this on all of your social medias, because this is really good information. So, thank you for that. The electric rate, I didn't talk about it during the actual ordinance. That one, it's probably my least favorite ordinance, sorry, Kevin. Probably my least favorite ordinance that we've passed in a long time. I hate the fact that we have to do that, but the reality is, is that the positive side to that is that we haven't done it since 2013. And the reason that we haven't had to do that since 2013 is because of a lot of really important leadership decisions that have happened over that time period. The, our purchase, our purchasing of power, and the way that that changed what our rate structure would have had to have been. Frankly, if we had not done what we did six years ago, 19, 2019, so six years ago, if we had not done what we did in 2019, we would have done this in 2019. And we probably would have done it several times subsequently. And so, the fact that as a city, as a utility, they had the vision to make the decisions that they did, which was really kind of scary at the time, telling KU that we were leaving them, but I think ultimately, we've arrived at a very good place with our utilities. We've been able, we don't, we've paid off the bonds for utilities, so we're in a really fantastic place, and that is because of the leadership of several members of this body, and also in the utility itself and the administrations over the years. So, while it's not a fun one, we would have had to have done it several times had it not been the decisions in the last decade. So, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. We'll move to Cora Jane Wilson. Cora Jane?
Thank you. Susan, great budget. Appreciate it. Nancy, that was really informative and great, and glad to have you back. And just all of you, you know, can't wait to get that Comprehensive Plan thing out, Amanda, so I can take it and see what you're asking. But I appreciate all the city employees. I mean, from the ground up, they make our city. And when people stop to realize that it's not about us, get over it, it's not us, it's all about you all and what you do for the citizens of Brea, because you are, you are what makes it roll. So, I appreciate that. And Jerry, thank you for those five years ago that you stood up and preached how much money we would save, and I kind of looked at it cross-eyed, maybe, but thinking, well, will we? But that was a great decision and a great fight you put up for a good reason for the people of Brea. I appreciate it, and thank you all.
Thank you, Cora Jane. Next, we'll move to Ronnie Terrell. Ronnie?
Thank you, sir.
Next, we'll move to Teresa Sinters.
No comment.
Thank you, Teresa. Katie Startsman? Katie?
Thank you. I have a couple of things. One, when we were discussing the budget in the work session, we, I asked about some of the capital projects that we hadn't been updated on. Just want to confirm that we'll have that on the agenda sometime in July?
Sean?
Great.
I think Sean has it as an action item.
Okay, great. Awesome. Thank you. I'm looking forward to it, that's all. And then, I got the email this afternoon about the June council written report, and I want to be respectful, so it sounds like we're gonna be shifting to a written department head report to be efficient and respectful of everyone's time. Definitely want to be respectful of y'all's time being here in the evenings. But I, and maybe I'm a nerd, because I like to know how everything gets done, and I don't really get to connect with the department heads very often, but I, and sometimes I know the reports can be long if people haven't presented in a long time, but I really prefer to have folks here. I think it's good for us as council to hear directly from you. The bulleted lists of the written reports are super informative, but we don't get maybe your narrative, or your, any asides, or things that you're thinking about or struggling with, or that kind of thing. And so, I think we're gonna lose something if we shift to purely written reports, and I'm also concerned about letting the public know about what's going on. I think sometimes when I see media coverage of our council meetings, there are some good updates from the department heads in their reports. So, I'm also concerned about that, and, you know, I want, I know we all want to be as transparent as possible, but I think it's gonna make it a little bit harder also for citizens to know what's going on with different departments. So, I'm just concerned. I understand the reasons behind it. I mean, I haven't had a conversation with anyone else about this. I definitely want to be respectful to my colleagues' time, department heads' time, but I'm concerned about that lack of kind of relationship. The Tuesday nights are the only times I see you guys. So, anyway.
Thank you, Katie. Next, we'll move to John Payne. John?
I'd also like to thank all the hard work that went into the budget, into the planning for the utilities, all the information about tourism. Thank you all for all the hard work that's gone forward. I love hearing about the progress that we're making on different projects going on through the city. This weekend, I was out several times and really enjoyed seeing a very active, engaged community. By the way, went to the Juneteenth event. It went over very, very well, but everywhere I looked, there was just, you know, we, our town was just very active, very engaged. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that the library is still doing summer reading. Sign up for summer reading. We'd love to add you to our statistics. I'd also like to invite everyone to the storytelling performances, magic shows, and animals that we'll be having throughout the next six weeks at the library. Everything's available, madisonlibrary.org on, you know, check the events calendar, and that's all I have.
Thank you, John. And next, we'll move to Steve Davis. Steve?
You didn't say last but not least, whatever you usually say. Last, yeah, whatever. Thanks, everybody, for the budget work. I know that's a lot of hard work, very familiar with that process, and you guys did a good job. The explanation's very simple. I wasn't able to be at the work session because of work, or my personal work, but anyway, I was able to read the budget, understand it, spent a lot of time on it, had questions, asked Sean, talked to him, shared my opinions, and he took those well. And I appreciate the process. Process was good. I'd like to see us have more work sessions. I know I checked around, and some of the cities do, and maybe in the past, we have had more than one work session. I think that would probably be good. You don't have to come to all of them, but maybe more than one would be good. Things do happen, so. But great job on the budget. You guys do a wonderful job. Nice to have Nancy back, interested in the Comprehensive Plan. That's gonna be exciting. I think we're making some good progress on things. I like the little blurb thing that you sent from the department heads, but I get what Katie's saying. I miss the personal touch, too, so. But I love the blurb, because I like to keep up with what's going on and everything, kind of keep it on my to-do list, checklist thing. So, anyway, thank y'all for coming out. I know we don't have a big group of public tonight, mostly employees, but appreciate it. Kevin, you did a great job on the utility thing. I hate increases, but, and I hate fixed-income people, but, you know, situations like that, it's hard on them. But I think we did the best we could do, and thankful for Jerry and this group for thinking ahead of time a few years ago and keeping rates as low as they have, because I appreciate that rate as an individual as well.
Bruce, I want to say so. Steve, without objection, we'll come back to Jerry.
I want to agree with Katie on what she said about the department heads, you know, coming in and giving the report. The best I can remember, when I first come on council, I think it was required, every department head, I think, had to attend to council meetings. I think the best I can remember, I think every department head was at the council meetings. I think I'm correct. And, you know, it's, I think in-person would be better than written myself. I just, I want to agree with you, okay? That's all. Thank you. I make a motion adjourn.
Motion to adjourn is their second. By John Payne. All in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. The meeting is adjourned.